Okay, call to order our proposed meeting for April ninth, twenty twenty five. We'll go around the table with a roll call. John Evans.
Jesse Rupert.
Lauren Bachman.
Rebecca Bailey.
Sarah Brown.
Aaron McConnell.
Billy Chixy.
Do we have anybody on? I will yet?
Not yet.
So at the moment, we are absent Robert Sossman and Joe Burke. Um, do we have anybody on for public comment?
We have nobody online.
And did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes from our March twelfth, twenty twenty five meeting? Any corrections, errors? Look for most.
Motion to approve our March meeting minutes.
Second.
Very good. More review and discussion action items. Guest speaker, town of Wellington, finding.
Yeah, I don't get that very often.
You should.
Um, so quick introduction, I'm Cody Burnham, the town's planning director.
I'm Brittany Eleanor, planner of Brea with the planning department.
And our special guest.
Darren Robertson, Sage Farms. And developer, yes.
Definitely a developer. He used to tell me he was just a home builder, but he is a developer. Um, so you guys have heard from me before. I think in the past, a lot of what I've kind of brought to the the post was kind of maybe more of the regulatory, the loss, the philosophical, here's how things work, and we can definitely cover that tonight, too. Um, but I'm really excited that tonight you guys get to look at how those rules and philosophical ideas come into play and practice in a development. Finally time, so. I want to kind of orient you with this project as Billy's pulling up our map here. The towns really have to be working with Darren on this project called Sage Farms. Um, this is to get you oriented. This is north, this is GW Bush Avenue, here's the railroad, this is highway one. This project is approximately three hundred acres in size. Pretty large scale. It's going to be developed in multiple phases. What you're looking at right now is a conceptual master plan. Um, kind of, this is what the developer and the town laid out together to envision, what is this area going to look like in the long term? As you might imagine, three hundred acres worth of development is a really big project to tackle. It's not going to happen all at once. It's going to happen in phases. Uh, this project has been approved as a phased development plan. We're anticipating twenty to twenty-five years potentially. Um, and this project is laid out in a, in a way that this lighter colored in the middle here is probably single family detached homes. Opportunities for multifamily or attached higher density residential to meet some of our housing affordability goals. Um, a neighborhood commercial corner here, and then on the south end focusing on creating more of a regional commercial hub. We have a letter of interest from UC Health to put a medical facility at that location to help anchor that and then develop some additional commercial retail around it. So pretty big and important project for the town. Relative to parks and open space, and which is you guys' purview. Um, the scale of this site results in the need for approximately thirty-four acres of park and open space requirements. That's a combination of pocket parks, neighborhood parks, and community parks, along with the connecting trail system uh, to tie it all together and relate back to existing um, developed in public sidewalks and trails. The, the reason I wanted to highlight the, the aspect of the scale of this project. A lot of the park and open space for that regional park was kind of envisioned being um, on this, the more southern portion of the site. Um, this is a conceptual plan, so we know that as we get into topography, road layouts, utility design, it's going to change a little bit. We know that that's going to happen when you're looking at a macro scale and you haven't developed every single detail yet. Um, but the, the requirement for that open space and trail connections isn't going to change, just where and what it looks like could be massaged over time as the project grows. I bring that up mostly because with that kind of being envisioned, the, the bigger component with that regional aspect is a little bit in the, little bit, it's in the later phases of development. And so what you're going to see in the short term, what we're presenting tonight is phase one, um, and some of those larger concepts aren't, aren't on the table just yet. They'll come at a later stage. So as we've been working with our development community here and Darren, um, the first phase that we're looking at is just because of utility layout, um, it's going to be on the north side and we're going to work south. Um, the first phase is going to consist primarily of the single family homes here in this kind of middle portion. And we'll be plotting opportunities for multifamily to come in um, in the near future, but those aren't, those aren't, the decisions haven't been made just yet on those and who the developer would be for that. Uh, or the builder would be. So we've got this opportunity now to look at how this first phase uh, relates to the existing communities of the north, how it ties into the overall uh, regional connectivity for those trails and meets our park and open space requirements. In our initial conversations with, with Darren for this project, one of the things that we've really tried to, to forward focus is, is an emphasis on our, our pedestrian and bike and multimodal connections. Darren's probably tired of hearing it, but we've gone through a couple rounds of review already that we'd really like to see that trail connection be more prominent. We really want to see how it relates to our existing trails. Um, and so that has been kind of a guiding staff comment for a lot of our reviews so far. So you're going to get to see that, um, and how that reflects in the proposed layout. Um, I'd like to turn it over to Brittany now, um, if you could introduce the first filing.
So if we go on to attachment B. You'll see this filing one of phase one, and as we mentioned. It is going to be single family homes. So again, this is GW Bush. And so this red line here is a primary trail that'll run north to south through this first phase. Um, there is a pocket park here and here in the middle of this block here. And so that trail will go around and through those two pocket parks. Um, with this first phase, it's two hundred and forty-one single family homes. And so in our code, a pocket park is required for every two hundred single family homes. Since they have over that, it's two pocket park. Um, and if you go down. Um, that trail, this is a typical section detail of that trail, so it's a concrete pad with two soft shoulders on either side. It loads, so that's. Um, and if you keep on. These are just landscape details. You should have gotten these in your packet. So this is a, just a closer view. Um, the intent of that north-south trail is to connect to the sage meadows across GW Bush and provide that connectivity through this new development. Um, this is that first pocket park we'll see on sheet L nine, uh, close up details. You can see more details on that. Um, but it is kind of like a contemplative garden. Um, per the code definition, a pocket park can be something like a playground, a contemplative garden, someplace for gathering, um, a pool, something like that. Um, so that is their first one. If you go. Um, so this is more towards the west of the um, site, the, uh, the trail is primarily through here. So this is just showing a detached sidewalk on this side. This is where that outlaw is that's intended for future commercial. Um, and so just laying out that connectivity to interact with that commercial component in the future. That is not part of this phase currently. So this is the second pocket park. Um, inside in that middle of the block, and this is one that does have a playground and a shade picnic area. Um, you'll see here, this strip of landscaping is a swale for stormwater. Um, and there is the trail along that. Um, additionally, here you'll see at the street B and H, they did provide a shortened crosswalk here to promote cool pedestrian, you know, safe crossing. Um, and so that is something that they are showing right there, which is helpful. Um, and if we keep going. And this is just the end of the development. And so as of right now for this phase one, it will stop at this street I. But in the future, as the plans develop, um, and the site is more planned out, it will connect to those future filings, but in this filing one, it will just terminate right here. Um, and then if you keep going down, we can see those close ups. So this is the entrance of the um, development. So Sage Meadows is across, and this is GW. Um, and then you'll see some different landscaping features and entrance to kind of make you realize that you're in this new neighborhood. If you keep going down.
That drives off to the west of the main entrance. To Sage Meadows.
Two entrances, but Sage Meadows, this is at the main entrance, it's across from Sage Meadows.
So where the sign is everything that's, that's across from the main entrance.
Not directly across, but yeah, I don't think it's.
Uh, it's directly across.
Is it directly?
Yeah, it's, I think the, the road alignment is squared up in a T intersection. The, the trail connectivity, you will have to cross the roads at some point. So the trail is not a direct shot. You'll have to follow the crosswalks.
Okay.
But it's very close. I mean, it's close.
Yeah, and go down sidewalk from GW Bush and.
Right, we, we can go back to an earlier sheet once Brittany's done and I can, we can definitely address what Sarah's asking about.
So this is that kind of contemplative garden area. And you'll see here the edge of the playground and the picnic shelter area. Um, so in general, that is that layout. If you want to go to the larger first image, so we can see the whole site and talk about anything. We have any questions?
Can you go to the next one down? Did that have?
So here's, I guess, the proposed main connection is.
So that's, that's wild grass.
And then this is the other one.
Yeah, this is Sage Meadows. So if I could, I'll go back to real quickly what Aaron and Sarah asked about. To Aaron's comment, yes, the road is aligned with Sage Meadows Drive. That's a T intersection, a typical alignment. What Brittany was commenting on, what there's a little bit of offset, and what Sarah was asking about. The existing trail through Sage Meadows comes right here, kind of along that open space, and that you can see it aligns with nothing on this side. So what we're proposing is, we don't want to have a, an unprotected crossing right there, so it makes the most sense to let this trail come over here, cross at a safe crossing, stop controlled crossing, and then cross the street and then hop back.
I mean, it's what, ten feet?
It's more than that, but it's like a lot.
It's a lot.
It was the side of that lot. You're right, sorry. But I think when you walk, it doesn't feel that far, because we all do it.
And so it was, the, the important part from my accounting, public safety piece is making sure that the, the people are people may choose to cross where they're not supposed to, but the design intent is we've provided a clear path with protected crossings to get there.
Another thing to contemplate, too, is as you go across in that area, they're commit the trail connectivity going multiple directions, or people will take that in multiple directions to get to other proposed.
Trail or public sidewalk, it's not a trail, but, but yeah, it does.
It's access trail.
Yep, it connects with the existing public blocks that people can get.
When we widen the road, we have sidewalk double signs.
Right, yeah, so there'll be a sidewalk on the south side of GW Bush also.
That's awesome. Well, it's going to be a stop sign at that intersection.
It'll be a two-way stop, so the, the intersecting streets will, will have a stop condition. GW Bush would not have a stop.
Can we talk about the, is that gateway crossing? Is that a proposed?
Runway.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Um, wild grass. Um, it is.
Top entrance?
Okay. Yeah, wild grass is proposed to have a, a traffic circle. Um, that's for traffic control and traffic calming. Part of the reasoning for that, um, you've got the GW Bush intersection here, and you've got this proximity with the traffic volume that might be anticipated for commercial and this much development, at least until the later phases can develop and have another second point of access. That traffic circle will help with, with queues, so traffic doesn't get backed up there.
That's a great idea. Is that part of phase one?
We're going to plan on, since we got White and GW Bush, we might as well just put it in, which we will. That plan is that we will.
Okay.
So.
So are those two, when you come into the new Sage Farms, those are two retention ponds?
So, yeah, they're for our irrigation system. We only need one of them.
Okay.
But we had a hard time struggling at that entrance on. It didn't make sense to have one here and nothing on the other sides. We tried to make it more aesthetically pleasing to come through.
Okay.
So we only really needed one pond, but we did two.
Yeah.
So you only got two parks right there. We're also bringing in a ditch lateral with that non-pot from North Pooter, so we have a second source of water.
Yeah, so, right, and to that, to that end, the, all the parks and open space and all the, the whole development is served by uh, non-potable irrigation wells. Um, so they're not going to have the outdoor irrigation cost burden that some of our other neighborhoods have.
And you might point out, Cody, that we got, um, when these site plans come through, especially on this one, they will put a ten-foot trail or sidewalk on this side, right?
Yeah.
So, right now, we're just kind of vertical curve.
Yeah, so that's, that's a good point. Appreciate you bringing that up. Um, anywhere where you see the, the, the label outlaw, outlaw's a term that we use, meaning you can't develop it without getting additional approvals, but we don't know yet what that is or what it's going to look like. There's not a purchaser for that lot yet to know how they're going to lay it out. So from a construction standpoint, we typically don't like to put too many improvements on a lot if it's just going to get torn up and you don't want to spend money to tear it out and spend it again.
Right.
Um, and so what we typically do is identify those outlots for future development, and then each, each uh, design and approval process will look at what's existing, what's the existing trail connectivity, what are the requirements for each lot or, or development to connect into the bigger whole, and they go through their own review process, um, to make sure that it all makes sense together.
Do you think that, is there any talk, because you know how Sage Meadows is set up with the trails around kind of the outside of the neighborhood? On the outside of the houses, is there talk about doing something similar for the rest of?
Um, I know we've talked to North Pooter, um, we have an access road right here that you kind of see they have access to.
Yeah.
To do their ditch and also the town's sewer, um, sewer line, it will have to be extended all the way up. So we have proposed, even though they won't have to maintain it, and if we have to break it out, we'd have to put it back, but possibly having a trail system down there.
Okay.
You know, not necessarily because you don't really want it right next to the train tracks. But we are trying to negotiate with North Pooter, being able to put a fence against the train tracks.
Yeah.
And then maybe a trail system that they can drive on instead of just a dirt road.
Okay.
Uh, which, you know, then the public's going to use it.
Right.
More like a soft trail feeling.
Uh, you know, I like.
Travel road base or.
Road base, yeah.
Yeah.
To be determined, I, I think there's, there's another entity that's not at the table right now to.
North Pooter.
North Pooter, they may have specific needs or requirements there, too. Um, and that's, I appreciate that coming up because there, there are still some details that aren't yet known and, and as part of what the, the post is looking at is not necessarily like, is that going to be a road or a trail, but are we accomplishing the overall goals for connectivity or meeting the park and open space requirements? Um, and we are looking for feedback on have, you, what, what Darren is reacting to primarily right now is staff feedback. This is what our code says. This is what we want. We want to prioritize, you know, trail and pedestrian connections. Um, so you're seeing a lot of, a lot of communications have happened here, and that's why we come to get this perspective, too.
This is all going to go away, this um, interim pond. And the cul-de-sac's roof will continue to go down, so the trail will continue till we get to our open space. And there'll also be um, detached sidewalk, am I right, Cody? On that.
I wonder about that with the commercial.
Yeah, with no parking on that side, right? So, on the west side. On the west side.
I know a lot of it's preliminary and um, we don't really have a complete idea yet, but as ADA and um, been like brought up as far as the parks access. And it was a guideline.
It'll be ADA, just like Sage Farms. I worked with the same company on all the ADA for the park equipment.
Has anybody asked you about port and place for your playground?
Who's going to pay for that?
Yeah, I know it's pricey, but it's something we really, really like it. I mean, it's.
It's good to want.
Yeah.
We just got to, I mean, and we'll price it out for sure. Um, we didn't do it in Sage Meadows, and what's your opinion? I don't know.
You know, I think I, I hate.
Both.
Hmm. Uh, but, a, and I think, you know, it was interesting, we had Kevin, right?
Yeah.
Um, a prior post member who came in and talked about going to different parks and how much that when you're in a wheelchair, that you you lose a lot of that, like you sink in and it's really hard to navigate. And so I think if we're talking about really trying to make our parks accessible for our community, then that's something we need to be really pushing, and it's, and.
We'll get a price for sure.
You know.
I think in the past, we've tried to do as the utmost we can. I mean, I'm the guy that added trails when they weren't even on the plan to connect. Um, and that will be one thing we definitely will consider.
Well, even the idea that at the end of this project, however far down the line that we're already down to Canada fifty-eight and we're already talked many, many times about connectivity with Fort Collins. It gets us that much closer and knowing how much money that Fort Collins is spending on their trails right now and adding trails and moving things, it, it's exciting to even think we'll be that close before too long.
Yeah, and one thing, let me ask you this and get your opinion, and maybe the, the cost savings helps put in the port in place for the pocket park. But I think your trail systems require a, a soft shoulder on top of the ten-foot ride, am I right? And in Sage Meadows, we didn't do that.
Hmm.
And we just did a ten-foot trail, and that's something we would like to actually do, just a ten-foot trail and bring grass right up to the edge. I think it's a cleaner look, it's easier for maintenance and everything and upkeep, and get rid of that soft shoulder that's required. And maybe the savings there can help go towards the cost of, I see more value in the port in place, so. What's your opinion on the trail? I mean, does it really need that ten foot and the extra? I don't think you have any even in town, do you?
We have some. It was a guiding tool that we used from the twenty fifteen master plan, so it's something that we've been pushing for to try to get to and achieve. Um, so to go against what was set forth in that plan might be a little bit difficult for myself to understand and comprehend of, you know. Personally, giving up something that was asked for and desired within that plan, but um, I, that's why we have the Pro's Board to, to talk about those things.
So I know it's.
You know.
What, what's the reasoning for the soft shoulder?
It's, it's to reduce impact for people who don't want to run on hard trail and don't, and have a surface that's even and flat right next to the trail system, so they have the same connectivity, but also don't have a, to, to walk, move, run, ride on a hard, compacted concrete surface.
But that wasn't required in Sage Meadows.
It.
Yeah, I, I, I wasn't here when Sage Meadows was approved.
Okay.
And neither was Billy, none of our staff were. Um, I don't know if it was even discussed or not, but it clearly the end result was it was not a requirement of that development, whether it was intended or forgotten or whatever the circumstances were. Um, and so, you know, I was here for Sage Meadows second, and one of the things that was talked about, we kind of discussed then was that's a smaller piece of a larger subdivision. Do we, in our opinion, it was better to maintain continuity than to shift mid-project. And so that was the decision making that happened for that later phase of Sage Meadows. Um, but I, I really couldn't speak to why it didn't get caught in that one. Um, I know we've got a couple of other subdivisions that might be in a similar cir- circumstance. Why, if the twenty fifteen recommendations have been in place since twenty fifteen, why didn't some of those other ones get, get picked up in that, too?
And I don't recall it at all.
Yeah, I, my guess is that there probably was not enough staff to be looking at those, those details to catch it, and it probably just went through until, until I started in twenty eighteen or end of seventeen. The town was relying on third-party review of development plans, and they may not have been as in tune with the master plans that our current staff is. Not pointing fingers or laying blame, but I think there's a reality there when you have a third-party agency, they're just not as in tune with your needs.
Does Fort Collins, do the Fort Collins trails have those little sides paths?
Any ones that are built now do.
Yeah. It's pretty common.
Mm-hmm. Well, our goal is to, well, the twenty fifteen master plan said to replace all soft trails with concrete, so they're first and foremost most ADA accessible.
Right.
And then put, put the soft trail on the side of it. What we've been trying to do is anytime we've been, been doing concrete upgrades is remove the soft trail, push it to the side, and then potentially regrade it next to it. So we're kind of multi-purposeing the space, so we are doing that, but it's, it's a slow process. So we haven't really, since I've been here, we haven't built any full trail systems through the Parks Department. Um, the one going through the Knowles was built already. Um, the one also at Harvest was built prior to. And neither one of those were built with that, but the one at the Knowles was created in coordination with Harvest, I believe. And internal staff just took that soft trail away. That goes basically um, right up to Rice there on Third Street and just made it a hard trail. Now, we haven't gone back and, and replenished the soft trail yet since I've been here, but that would be the ultimate goal as according to the twenty fifteen master plan. So I mean, there, there are things to consider. You know, we talked about what the master plan says. We've got a new master plan coming out, and I'm sure that those criteria would be dictated further in that master plan, uh, but we also do have um some comparables across town where we have some, we, we don't have others. And I guess that's what I would put to this board like Darren did. If, if, if we do cost savings in one facet. Um, do we look to push that towards something that could be a, another thing that we're trying to do, which the master plan said is remove all EWF at playgrounds and replace with port and place or mandate that port and place is in all playgrounds built.
See more value in the playground and being ADA like that, but.
If, if you can make everything ADA. I mean, that, and that's, I, yeah, you can get it with mulch, but if you could do port in place and get your ten-foot trail and forego part of it for that cost. I mean, it would be my opinion that everything's ADA.
I think, or ADA anyway.
Yeah, ADA, better ADA, easier, easier, except, easier, more accessible.
Would there be room for improvement? Is there enough width on this trail for room for addition later for down the road to be able to add a a two to four? And I know we have.
There might be some slow considerations in some areas.
Right, and that's same thing in harvest. Right, in the harvest with the Box Elder Creek that there's no area for it, and if we put a soft trail there and expect people to use it, you'll get sloughing off into the creek potentially, and we don't want that either. Um, but you know, there's also, we do have we, we do have these um, guidelines here. But, but there's also other opportunity to think about. We have a ten-foot path with two feet on either side. We've also talked about four feet on one side. You know, it's easier to maintain that way, or just two feet on one side rather than two feet on each side, you know. Uh, there's ways to get around it, and this, you know, this conversation for me is good for us moving forward into a master plan. What we look to kind of help with those recommend, or guidelines, I should say, for the master plan, because if it isn't feasible in certain areas, it's hard to, you know, put in to a master plan or um, rubber stamp that because we've seen in other tight areas that it's not necessarily able to be done. But again, I go back to my first statement, it is part of what the twenty fifteen master plan does say. So.
The, one of, I, I agree with the discussion, you know, so, so far, and I know that there's some talking points to discuss in that. One of the things that I want to bring up, too, and I probably should have mentioned it earlier on, and I forgot to, so I'll bring it up now. Um, a couple of years ago, there was a discussion about, on, especially for pocket parks. Um, but ownership and maintenance, that, um, there was a desire from the town staff because maintenance of a hundred little pocket parks puts a pretty big burden on our parks team to drive trailer around and, and do all that to maintain them. And our code provides for uh, pocket parks are maybe owned and maintained by the town or maybe owned and maintained by an HOA or homeowners association. And the shift of philosophy a couple of years ago was, we really don't need to be in the business of maintaining all these pocket parks that are benefiting the immediately adjacent neighbors. Those, especially the small ones, should be put in the hands of the HOA to own and maintain and not rely on the town and property taxes to go and do all the small maintenance projects. What we've talked about with, with Darren on this project is, and maybe we go back to the, the larger, yeah, perfect. What we, what staff proposed was, we really don't want to be in the business of maintaining your irrigation ponds. We really don't want to be in the business of maintaining this pocket park or the, you know, buffer spaces, tree scape, and things like that. You've got a non-pot system that's going to be owned and maintained by the HOA for irrigation purposes. We don't want to be doing maintenance and breaking your sprinkler lines and you accusing us, asking us to fix it. We took the position that the HOA should own and maintain all the open spaces in the parks except for that larger regional park that was um, presented on the, the overall master concept. Um, that was staff's opinion, um, so we can solicit feedback on that, and I would. Um, that was staff's opinion, um, so we can solicit feedback on that and I would feel pretty strongly from my own standpoint that we shouldn't be in the business of maintaining pocket parks. Um, and probably these, these trail connections are in tracts or, or small pieces of land that would be owned and maintained by the HOA too. So from a trail maintenance standpoint, would be rely on the HOA to maintain those just similar to, to um, Sage Meadows where they maintain the trail connections through there too. Um, and so that maintenance responsibility uh, could come into play when you're talking about hard trail, soft trail. I'm not sure if we've had any context on that in the past or examples from other communities, but I wanna bring up that ownership and maintenance conversation.
Going back later to put it in.
Right, yeah, if it's, if we're, if we're punting it to later, that we'd be relying on the HOA to do that. And I don't know that we would be successful in those negotiations. Especially if it's years after the fact and Darren's no longer involved because it's been handed over, that could be a challenge.
How about lighting no longer that trail?
We're looking at some lighting and we were gonna talk to Tom about it, um, some just solar lighting. Again, you gotta respect the neighbors though, who back up to it. I'm open for comment on that. I know we don't have it in Sage Meadows.
We sorely lack it across our entire trail system. It has never been built and it's something that the community speaks about quite frequently when, when you have people and children in the summer, so.
Well, this will already be lighted. I definitely see lights and or bigger lights around this park for sure. I just struggle when it's coming behind and it packs behind houses.
I would prefer even just a low-lit ballards.
Yeah, that's what we were looking at.
They only shine down and out. They don't even flash the entire trail. It just gives you an idea that you can see in front of you, a direction as well as you can, you know, if someone crosses a light, ten lights down, five lights down, you know someone's coming your way, especially a bicycle, pedestrian crossing. Those are the scariest for me at night because people have their headphones in and they're looking up at the stars and you need to be able to, you know, have some sort of
Is there a guideline that you guys have on the distance?
I
These are all good questions.
I don't think that the twenty fifteen master plan puts any of that, that out there. It does not.
It does not.
It does not. So we will absolutely be working for that. It's, we don't have lighting. And it, it's, it's a very large problem and we, every time someone's coming in front of us, Darren last time, we, we've asked for lighting and we need it to be for the safety and that is part of um the strategic plan, I believe.
So maybe it's more lighting around here and around this pocket park, less and fewer ballards, maybe they'll be in there.
That's a good thing to consider.
But then you gotta worry about, you know, again, you got a ten-foot trail, you got this other soft trail and a light. Obviously, the HOA's gonna maintain it, shovel it, it's just, hopefully they don't knock them down.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, so all those things we definitely wanna look at and reprice it out. So, um, I apologize, sometimes the trails in the parks go last and I, you want to make sure you got sewer capacity and water.
Well, i- if you wanna speak to that, I know you, I believe you did um, to this board. I don't know if all the members are here. But just the idea, I know this is stepping back maybe a year and a half ago, but
I'm happy to just remind you.
Thirteen acres, so that we can if you wanna speak to that real quick.
Sure, yeah. Um, we shifted gears from trail lighting pretty quickly there.
We're talking about when you said the, you know, how long it might take to get parks in this development.
Right, yep, no, that's perfect. Could you maybe go back to um, things that had to be Yeah, so again, remember this is, this is conceptual and when this was laid out for this conceptual master plan, this park and open space area is, it's roughly thirty-four acres. Um, which is big. I don't know if you guys can conceptualize how big thirty-four acres is.
Three times the size of WCP.
Yeah. Pretty big. So, but it, it's serving, you know, it's the three hundred acres that it's serving. Um, when this was laid out, we, we tried to consolidate most of the open space into that significant regional park and that thirty-four acres is significant. At the same time, we had also identified um, that there's a vacant piece of property along Jefferson Avenue by the railroad tracks in Box Elder Creek. It's got adjacency to an existing town trail system, an existing town park at Harvest Park. Um, and it was centrally located for uh, the community as well as convenient close access to old town neighborhoods that don't have a lot of park and open space amenities. And so I reached out to Darren on a flyer and said, hey Darren, this piece of land is for sale. Would you consider helping the town acquire that piece of property? It's roughly thirteen acres. And my proposal was, if you can acquire that piece of land, I would propose that we could offset the dedication for open space for open space to acquire that strategic piece of property and reduce this by a parata amount to still have a twenty-plus acre park down here, which is still significant, but also gain that opportunity that wouldn't have otherwise existed for the town. Um, and so I've notified Darren that we're still interested in pursuing that thirteen acre kind of this, this land swap, open space for open space. Um, and so far Darren's been willing to work with us on figuring that out. Um, so that is part of this overall concept is that this amount of open space may be reduced um, to acquire that strategic piece of property.
And something important to consider is the timing of all of this, depending on when.
Well, so what we're trying to do is we're trying to negotiate this with our development agreement now, so I can actually, I don't want that thirteen acres.
Of course.
I have been approached by other parties that want it. And we're trying to hash it out. My biggest problem with this is trying to dedicate to the town, turn it over in the next year or whenever this is done. But when do I truly get the benefit of mine? Cause you got, I mean, this might be, this might be fifteen years from now. You guys don't have the sewer capacity right now. So there's gonna have to be some give and take that Cody and I will arm wrestle on, but we'll figure it out. Anyway, so he's benefit for the town to have that. I'm glad Cody came to us, I mean, I don't think the town could have negotiated as quickly as what I did um, to get that land.
And what it costs us more is prices go up when you work for government.
Yeah, and I think we got it at the right price. But yeah, so that's something that we're gonna try to hash out, but I would rather turn this over to you guys in the next year, so I'm not mowing it and all that. Um, but it's just when am I gonna get the benefit of um, thirteen acres of additional density? So, but I don't see why we need thirty-four, thirty-five acres on the edge of town for a park for really one community, if we can benefit the whole community with the rec center and stuff like that. So those are things you guys gotta be looking at. Hopefully, that's a huge benefit for the town.
Do you wanna speak to the timing on the track, park and trail master plan? I'm sure this group's already well familiar with that.
Timing as far as?
They, well, I'll speak to it and then you can fill in any gaps that I missed, but when we're looking at a, you know, Darren mentioned it could be fifteen years before we're down here. We, we don't really know what that timeline is gonna be like, but it's not right now. And so that was another consideration that, you know, we know that's gonna take a while. Meanwhile, that Jefferson Street property, we can begin conceptualizing and making meaningful progress on community improvements to that park now. Um, while this project is built out over time. And so that was another significant consideration on the timing is we can make immediate progress on another thirteen acre significant community feature instead of waiting for fifteen or twenty years for this to happen.
I really like ten-foot sidewalks.
I feel like you got, you got a marketing chip there. I, I see, I see, I understand.
Um, and there's some give and take. You know, guys, we want this neighborhood to be over the top. You know, and hopefully it will. I think Sage Meadows turned out better than everybody expected. Um, you know, when we think we need to add something, I don't think we've ever held back. You know, so I like the idea of doing the ADA playground if we can benefit for it. Or, you know, and we need benefits for it. So we'll look at all those things.
Are there, are there grants available for foreign play parks? I mean, and maybe that's not
It would have to be turned over to us as open land and we would probably have to open ourselves.
Develop and then enter into competitive process of grants.
And I still think we're more competitive than the town.
I personally think that, you know, I would love to hear everybody's opinion for, for that specific topic, but I know port in place is something that's extremely important to our community. Um, a ten-foot trail is fantastic to think about. A lot of the times in the past, they've been eight feet. And we had, have had some connectivity in older parts that we've expanded from six feet to eight feet um, recently. So even a ten-foot trail without a buffer versus port in place, I'd love to hear your opinion so that Darren can walk away with just some of that knowledge coming from this group.
Is there an option to go an eight-foot trail with and, and offset the cost even more for the port in place?
Um, yeah, saves money. I mean, two foot of concrete, six inches is a lot of money.
Does that take away from the development? I mean, or is that, is that a, you're not, are you requiring that?
The town requires.
The, the ten-foot is our standard and I, I can speak from my experience, but I'd also lean into Billy's experience too that you know, ten foot's typically a standard to give plenty of room for strollers, bikes, bike trailers to, to be able to pass without, without handlebars colliding and things like that. Um, and so ten foot is typically for, uh, maybe I'll take a step back to ten foot's the kind of typical for a trail. And when you're, when we're looking at, at this, you know, overall concept, a big part of what staff and Brittany and I have been kind of pushing on is you wanna make sure that there's a clearly defined trail alignment that's, that through connectivity. And that trail is different than a public sidewalk. And that, that ten-foot with, this is the regional trail um, has been an important aspect of what we've looked at. We're asking for, for five-foot detached, ten-foot next to commercials are standard for public sidewalks. But in my mind, a trail is a lot different than a public walkway. And I'm sure Billy's giving you guys updates. I was, we've been meeting with Laramie County, Fort Collins and uh, North Front Range MPO recently advocating for trail alignment connectivity between Lawrence and Fort Collins. I was on a, a Noco Bike Ped Alliance meeting this morning. Um, and they are moving forward with incorporating in their plans for the North Front Range MPO, a connection for Box Elder. I'm calling it Box Elder Trail officially, doesn't have a name yet. I think it's Regional Activity Trail Corridor number eight. Um, but that, that trail alignment, we've, we've roughly aligned connecting at Turnberry um, and Douglas, is that the right, in Fort Collins through the county open space um, and connecting eventually into this development. So, so our vision would be that that trail alignment would connect to and through this neighborhood and back into the rest of Wellington, downtown and all of our other parks.
I'd hate to see us shrink that, that sidewalk.
I, I have no problem doing a ten-foot trail. But you know, I think I have a problem with the extra bit of trail because sprinkler heads and how do you get the grass up against it and maintenance and, I mean, am I seeing something wrong? But I've just, we wanna bring sprinkler heads right to the, to it and turf right to the um, easy to maintain. But once we have that trail and kids and gravel's going everywhere and sprinkler heads and grass, I think I just like the way it worked out in Sage Meadows, but that's my opinion. And I, I don't think I would do an eight-foot trail even if you give me the option. I think ten foot's nice when you got bikes going by people and stuff like that.
And the whole point is to make it a, an activity way, you know, a place for people to easily access and use. And making it smaller doesn't feed that.
Defined and regional too, I think are very important with the connectivity moving forward, so.
And it's easier actually to maintain because if you put a broom on a skid, you can do it, but if you get down to eight foot, then you're tearing up grass.
We're not saying either or though, right? We're saying ten foot and there's still potential for port in place?
Yeah, we just gotta get the numbers on it and we can sure let you guys know, but I mean, if it's budgetable and this is a big enough project, it probably is. That was the first one that we actually did a nice park on, but um, we just gotta get the numbers.
Yeah, well, the other piece I would say is that, what, from my perspective anyway, when I look at it, it would be easier to go back in and replace pour and replace mulch with pour in place than it is to end up with a too small. Too small, yeah, too small of the trail. Yeah, I mean, it, yes, we want the park and play. I think we know that that's something citywide, townwide that we want for our community. But we can go back in and hopefully way to keep up ADA standards.
Right.
One thing we're also doing now, I don't know if it needs, they need to know or not, but on our detention ponds, or I mean, not our detention ponds, but our ponds, holding the water for the non-pot. We're not gonna do like Sage Meadows where it just is slopes off, cause you can see how it's not being maintained. So we'll actually pour um, a concrete curbing. So, and then put a um, a barrier so that nothing can grow around it. So you get this nice concrete whole circle around that almost looks like a pond. So we're, I mean, there's some things we're planning on that we saw because, you know, it worked in Sage Meadows, it worked great when the developer was mowing it and spraying it. But you see what happens when nothing's taken care of.
So everything's more of a retention than a detention? It's what, was what those two ponds?
Those are for irrigation. Yeah, but you know, but in Sage Meadows, we pump into a pond. Um, and the reason why we do that is so that when someone, one person turns on the non-pot, that's why all these wells are going bad because they have to start up the well. We pump to a, a, a pond and then from that pond, we draw for the irrigation system for the whole subdivision. But in there, if you look down at Sage Meadows, there's trees and cotwoods coming up along the shoreline. It's actually a mess. I think it's a mess. It's a maintenance mess.
It's not attractive and provides bird habitat and other things, but from a maintenance standpoint, and, and honestly, one of the big concerns I have with situations like that, the tree roots start to damage pond liners where your irrigation water is gonna start leaking. It starts to degrade the edges and then now you're dredging and redoing the pond, so.
But you know, I mean, when we used to mow that and maintain that and spray that, it did look nice, but if you don't stay up on it every year. So we're gonna relook and, and so that's a nice feature as you can, so, yeah.
I wanted to highlight, if I can shift the gear just a little bit, I wanted to kind of highlight that, kind of that regional trail connectivity piece. And point out that one of the big important things that we've kind of been pushing on was we didn't want the trail to just be an oversized sidewalk adjacent to a road. Um, and so kind of hot in here, the color helps it pop a little bit, but you can see where this trail alignment. Um, it's through open spaces, so there's, there's space on both sides of the trail. Um, you can't really see it in this type of a plan set, but there are, there's also drainage that runs through this corridor. The drainage generally runs north to south and it has to go somewhere. A lot of that's gonna be picked up in the roads, but some of it's gonna be picked up in the open space. So it won't be wet or running water, but in a big storm event, it's gonna go to some of these low spots. But this, this trail alignment in this corridor is gonna feel like a true trail with this open space around it. Um, and so I think that's an important aspect. It was important to us to pu- to push that concept. And I also wanted to kind of go back to something Darren said a little bit ago about kind of the, the feel like Sage Meadows has a, a theme with that, that concrete. Darren, maybe speak a little bit about what's the overall vision and theme for this, you know, total development plan? It's not exactly like saddleback that might be a little bit more, you know, rural, larger lot of open space. This one feels a little more modern. We've got commercial entities and commercial aspects to it, multifamily.
We're gonna have multifamily. We're gonna, we're trying to work like with bachelor homes. Um, bring in some one, two and three-bedroom multifamily units, which you guys badly need for housing needs here. So there's gonna be a lot of diversity. We're gonna get into higher-end homes up on along Highway one, cause that's your main interest in the town. Um, and you guys, it's gonna change too. I mean, um, this will not, the original layout will not be the original layout. We're already realizing that they, all this water kind of tends to go down to the center. You have the big map.
Yeah, I'll, I'll sneak past you and we'll go back to it. You want the, the concept?
Yeah, yeah, give me the concept. Or you can just go to the top.
But it's a different attachment. Why did Billy walk away?
Guys, I really see this. I mean, and we might have to re, rezone this a little bit. But I see this open space park. I see all these lots that we have going right to here, going into cul-de-sacs to here. I see this maybe be in the regional park area right now, the way the water wants to drain that way. Which means this might not be our open space, which is kind of nice, cause it's not right next to the train tracks and it's more centrally located within the subdivision. And this might be higher density, multifamily across from a UC Health or you can have retirements, older housing, um, stuff like that. So I think this town needs a, we need to relook at our diversity and what we put in and, and make it affordable and yet still have some high-end homes up in here. This could change and all be high-end, who knows? You know, but yet have diversity on the You know, but yet have diversity on these or it's obtainable for housing. So, but that's where I don't want you to think, oh, the trail's coming right here and housing gonna meander through. I see an open park area, maybe possibly going in there with a trail system off and the trail system off and still connected.
Are there gonna be limitations on what is housed in that open space park down the road?
Limitations?
Can you put ball fields in there?
Oh, it'd be big enough for ball fields. I mean.
I mean, it's, it's obviously if it's double, even with the twenty acres, it's double. Well, I think community. So, I mean, but i- if first.
Soccer fields or something.
The development's not gonna have any issue with a baseball or fields or two fields or?
I don't.
Yes, but it's usable space. It's not all gonna end up being open space and ends up being a detention pond.
There will be aspects of that.
There'll be aspects of it, but.
So, and when we look at drainage, a lot of times you see it in Fort Collins has done a pretty good job of this in most instances where you, you make the ponds large enough. That they're flat bottom, kind of like, like viewpoint pond is, is probably a good example. Um, this one could obviously be a lot bigger than that, but they'd be dry, they wouldn't hold water. Um, and you grade them out flat enough that you can put ball fields on them and and different aspects. You, those are probably good for open space fields, but you wouldn't typically put like a baseball diamond in a detention pond.
I think it's big enough that you can have.
See it on this layout too, Darren, if you remember that one, the.
Yeah, we had ball parks up in here. And then we had soccer fields down in here that this is detention right here, but yet could still be a soccer field.
Where all of our sports are.
So it would still be usable, but it would all, it kind of served that dual function. And important to keep in mind that those designs are not done yet. We, we did, we did have Darren and team put together a conceptual park layout, just to kind of illustrate what. The magnitude of this size park could do. That example, which we didn't bring tonight. Um, that example had four ball fields, six soccer fields, a clubhouse, a pool.
What's the uh? But I do think like putting maybe the open space and park in here, it actually works better for the neighborhood on the trail system. Because not everything's gonna be directed down to the bottom.
Well, and it, it's kind of that center pipeline. Right through a bigger, larger community gathering space.
What, what is this designated as?
It's nothing now.
That, yeah, the, that concept's already changed. Um, we, we're not a big proponent of kind of land locking. Open spaces behind backyards and and the preliminary plan, we can go over to the phase one drawing.
Yeah, phase one basically goes from right here. Down through here.
Yeah, that little kidney bean shape, open space is not part of the proposal. This was the concept from a year ago.
Are there any spaces for neighborhood sized parks? Like in a neighborhood park or then pocket parks in a community, or is this just?
Well, that's what we're talking. This could be a huge, I mean, there, there could be multiple parks through here and up in here.
And you're, yeah, so and under our land use code, there's three sizes of parks. There's. Pocket park, neighborhood park, community park. And when we did this original layout, we identified that every two hundred houses has to provide a pocket park. That's, we didn't waver from that. Um, and what we said for the neighborhood parks was if we can consolidate everything into a more significant, almost, almost regional park. Um, that that would be more beneficial for this type of development than to have the two neighborhood parks in the most proximity together.
We'd incorporate our clubhouse pool in that park area too.
So it, it does, the Sage Meadow Park, is that a neighborhood park or is that a pocket park?
Sage Meadows has open space.
HOA clubhouse, right?
I mean, it's almost like a pocket neighborhood.
I'm just trying to understand what it, what that looks like compared to what the pocket park will look like in phase one.
The, the, uh, let me make sure I, I may have misspoken, because you're linking up the clubhouse pool and playground. That's a pocket park. That's, that's a pocket park because it doesn't serve anything more than immediately adjacent neighbors. It's not open to the public. Not that, yeah, it's not town maintained. Uh, it's, it serves the immediate residents that are paying for the ownership maintenance. I was referring to the open space along the railroad tracks, which is not a park. It is open space, um, but it's not really designed for active recreation, except the, the trail is a great amenity and we don't want to lose that, but. Um, but it's not really a, a park per se. It's more that open space designation.
We'll have to have more, I think, in this site, pocket parks.
More pocket parks, yeah. I think the total concept is, actually it's at the bottom, there's thirteen hundred and some residential units. Is the anticipated total density.
I mean, I think we're gonna end up being about nine hundred to a thousand fifty, depending on density. But I think the town needs to look at, you know, what can we do and can we get more density in some of these commercial areas? Where we can get that one bedroom, nine hundred and fifty square foot attached, housing on a sixplex. Um, which uses less water, less sewer. Well, and, and makes, it makes it attainable for people to build in this community.
I mean, that's almost like it's a community in of its own.
And then you have a big park in your backyard, so let's find it and attach it.
But it's also accessible to the rest of the town and the community and the region and.
I think we have options, Cody, to put multifamily here, if UC Health does enter, would refer some housing there too.
The, the zoning was contemplated to allow commercial and multifamily on those.
Yeah, I think the fact that you've also looked at adding commercial.
There's a lot of commercial here.
That is needed.
It's fifty-eight acres of commercial space.
And I did have someone reach out this week on the ninety group.
I pushed one your way, we'll talk later.
Um, with, with potential other pocket parks before we get to the community park space. Has there been thought of other, other types of amenities going in? Um, such as like basketball courts and?
I was a wrestler, not a basketball player.
Okay, so outdoor multi-use spaces that you could put a mat on. Rather than, you know, just a typical.
Um, you know, we. We have not gone so far through the neighborhood.
Understand, understandable. I, I think that's something that our master plan would show as, as far as, you know, amenitizing certain areas. Um, would, would be a need moving forward, not saying that they wouldn't get it all. That would need from the community park, just kind of throwing that out there.
Have a list of, these would be great pocket park ideas.
Yeah, and I, I think, I'm sorry, but you know, to that end, as since this is a phased development, that's gonna take a couple of years. This, this project's gonna come back in multiple phases. You're gonna have your parks and trail master plan updated by the time phase two comes around. And so if there is specific guides, like we're really lacking X type of amenity in the southern area of town, those types, that type of feedback in the, in the master plan. Will help inform what the need is for laying out the development and to meet those needs.
At phase one looks great with the, the kind of entryway that's. Set out for places for people to gather and sit and then the pocket park and the trail through it.
So now, understanding like overarching what this is gonna look like, your original question around whether the HOAs should be responsible for the pocket parks. I think they should as well. Okay, I didn't know if that was a. I thought that would put on the table as a question, but I agree with it regardless, so.
Yeah, and thanks for that. That, that was the suggestion. I'm sorry, I kind of misled that. I, I tried to bring that up in the context of the HOA is gonna be. First intended to be owning and maintaining these open spaces, the trails. And I've tried to tie that to the design of the trail. It, it's not gonna be Billy's team maintaining it. It's gonna be private maintenance.
Got it.
That's our intent. And we're going through track D right now in Sage Meadows where, don't ask me why, but back in the day Larry and Brad. Wanted, I don't know if it was a land grab or what, but they wanted all of track D be dedicated to the town. I've been working with Cody, so I've not dedicated that back to the HOA yet. I'm trying to protect the HOA on their pond and, and, and.
Water rights.
Water rights. Yet the town doesn't want to go shovel that sidewalk all the time. You, you have a force storm. So we're working on replanning that right now, but I, don't ask me why, back in the day, they actually made us write in the development agreement. And it has to be dedicated back to the town. Where now we're taking them over.
Right, and I've told Darren, I don't know why the town wanted this. I don't want your HOA pond. I don't want to deal with that irrigation.
Fighting it for five, I've been trying. So, but, um, I think we're there on it, so.
The good news is we've learned a lot of lessons through some of the past development, uh, decisions that were made and, and what we do or don't want to do anymore. And it helps inform these discussions.
Thoughts going back, not to circle back, but on the ten foot trail, thoughts, I mean.
My personal opinion is, um, knowing that it's gonna be all HOA maintained, that we go with the ten foot trail and the soft trail. Yeah, because of just moving that later, if we do decide like Fort Collins comes up, we are connectivity. That's what they're doing. We kind of want to start having the same thing and it was in our twenty fifteen master plan for guidelines. But to add that later, and like you said, move sprinklers. And get that all done, I think it's more likely that an HOA would be inclined to have less maintenance later down the road if they decided, you know what? I don't, tired of putting all this mulch in, I'm tired of doing this every year. And they want to go and do the port in place on their own. That's something that could be done without having to move utilities. Just an opinion. I don't know, anybody else got anything?
I just think we need to follow the guidelines and it is important. We did put it in there for a re- reason and as we moved to, um. More regional trail systems. And then making sure we're following the ADA trail guidelines as well would be really important as far as the slopes. We heard from Kevin, how much work it can take for someone in a wheelchair and so making sure we're following those guidelines as well. That are in the twenty fifteen master plan.
Does the soft trail have to be ADA also?
I don't think a soft trail ever meets ADA compliant. The, the concern I have with soft trail and private maintenance is what happens if it gets overgrown with weeds? If the HOA fails to maintain it properly, what do you have then? I think grass is easy to understand how to maintain it.
I like your trails through Sage Meadows. I mean, I, they look great. It's a clean look. I mean, it's well maintained. It's, so. I mean, as far, as far as the look goes, I wasn't here for the twenty fifteen and I respect the, what the twenty fifteen master plan said, but. Um, also, I know there's. Uh, there's not unlimited funds and if. We could be more accessible in a playground area. Then I think that'd be something to not burden the developer with, but might do sense.
I could go either way on that. I, I guess I identify with what Cody said with the maintenance of having a soft trail. That then, you know, as people use it and as the grass grows over to it. And the town is not maintaining it and we're relying on an HOA to maintain it, what does that start to look like? You know, I think it's, it's fairly, I mean. I don't run nearly as much as I used to, but I was always more comfortable just on grass. Now I know you get the divots and the things like that, but. I would prefer to just to have a, a trail that looks nice and feels nice.
So you got a mix.
I'm just more worried about the swell and how do you fit it all in? You know?
Oh, with, with the drainage component. So, when earlier, I wasn't trying to be rude, but I, I pulled out my phone and I was looking at a picture I had taken. The, the example that I took a picture of was kind of in relationship to this alignment here. With the side slopes of the, the drainage needs. There's an example that I thought would be pretty akin to what we're looking at here. Um, it's in the, it's in Sage Meadows Second. If some of you are probably familiar with that, not everyone might be. Um, but there's a, in Sage Meadows Second at the south end and of the new, where there's empty lots currently that'll be built in the future. The trail alignment comes to the west and then hits the street. And there's a pretty significant, and it's, it's not an unsafe slope, but one, the question that came up when we were, when Darren was, was building that trail. Was gosh, the plan's called for grass and shrubs and trees on this and. There's no way to get the drainage to work and the vegetation's not gonna stick and be successful on that side slope. What do you want to do? And we talked about, I said, why don't you put down some rock there? Or is Darren's suggestion? It costs more, but it made the maintenance easier. It protects that slope from erosion and it, I, my picture, I wanted to reconfirm, like, it still looks like a trail and it still makes sense. Um, and I envision there will be portions of this trail section through here where the drainage is necessary in the slopes. To make that work are probably not gonna have adequate width for fourteen feet and still have that flat. Portion of it, it may result in a soft trail eroding into the swale over time. And I don't know that for certain. It's something that we want to look at, but the competing need to convey drainage through there. Was something we need to take a hard look at to make sure it all, all fits.
Yeah, I gotta make sure the slope is gonna be workable. It looks great on paper till you get out there and actually do it. Who else?
I do want to note that this is a pretty special thing that you guys are going through this and talking to this with this group. Right now, in this order of, of, that you guys are seeing these plans very early on, getting to give her feedback. Uh, it hasn't always been that, the way, it's kind of like, uh, sometimes an afterthought of. Let's make sure all the advisory committees put, give us a thumbs up. Instead, this is much more a better model of. Let's see what we are saying and then put that into the plan that will be, be successful, so. I just want to say thank you for participating in that, in that activity and definitely using the great feedback from this group.
Thank you.
It's gonna be a great sign.
This is, this is gonna secure Wellington for a very long time. This whole project is really good for us.
So we'll, we'll look at the slopes and see if it's possible. I just hate to have. Some here, some not here, some here, some not here. We do want to make it consistent to the neighborhood and we'll look at some lighting systems. Um, some bollards, you know, through here. We'll see what we can do in here, or maybe it's a light post to light post, you know, with. Um, I don't want to overdo all the bollards. I want to be respectful and then I'll keep that back up to it, you know? And there will be other trail systems through this neighborhood with the commercial going in until site plans that you guys will be able to address. And I think by changing the whole park system to the middle, it's actually gonna make it to work and spider out, possibly with the trail system. Compared to being down at the bottom, but we gotta, we have to get deeper in the weeds to figure all that out. So if that works, I mean. It's a big project. I mean, you don't realize how big it is till you, I think I was asked, uh, what do you think the timeline on this? How, how many years? I'm like, I absolutely have no idea. I mean, this could be a twenty, twenty-five year project, so. But, uh. But if we can get UC Health in there too, I mean, it's a huge anchor, get affordability and have diversity, that's what we're after.
Cody, how does that work when we have? When he's stating, you know, it could be a twenty-five year project, where is all the information kept so that, you know, gosh. You could have moved on, uh, this board would be all fresh. You know, from then, how do we make sure we're, we're collecting all this information, these conversations and, um. Making sure, it, it's, everything stays on the right, the right page.
Yeah, great question, Orleans. Thanks for bringing that up. So when we were, when the, when we being the, the town was considering annexation of this property, Darren said I want to propose development. We said we do that, we can annex it. Before the town would agree to say, yep, we'll annex that and we'll provide those services. Uh, we made him lay out the, the, the first sheet, the conceptual mashup. What are you proposing? And we beat that up for quite a while, said, no, you need to provide a full service neighborhood. You can't just, we're not gonna. Not for, not for lack of trust, but, but the trust is we're gonna do what's right, wasn't enough. We wanted to make sure that we had it locked in. So when we did this, this.
Goes both ways.
It, it does go both ways. We, we arm wrestled over that too. Um, but what, the guarantees that are in place is we've, we've adopted an annexation agreement. The, the Board of Trustees approved that document. It's a recorded document with a, with a kind of click and recorder and it outlines, these are the things that you have to comply with. And it states that, um, it has to proceed generally in compliance with the conceptual master plan. Everything's things will change as details are evolving. Um, but it also, um, lays out that, um, this was developed as a planning and development, which is a special. Type of zoning and a special development tool that acknowledges, it's not gonna happen all at once. It happens over a period of time. We identified the types of land uses that would be allowed in those different colored blocks on that sheet. And so for any of that to change, it has to go through an approval process. Um, and every phase of development goes through our subdivision regulations, which is what Darren's going through right now, is. Developers are allowed to advance and do anything without going through that process of approval. Where we give the planning commission, we propose, we go to the board of trustees, oftentimes twice, because we do preliminary plot and final plot. Um, and so it goes through a very rigorous review process to make sure that. Um, and so it goes through a very rigorous review process to make sure that. It's meeting the current standards and requirements. It's reflecting the recommendations of our master plans and it fits together with the adjacent cohesive neighborhoods. So each step of that process has to go through a pretty rigorous review.
And then reported and.
If each phase gets recorded with its own development agreement that ties back to the master agreement.
I I wanna make comment on that too because. That, you know, those are development plans. These are all that side of it, but everything that you guys are talking about with. Considerations of the parks and trails. You really, the way you do that is by creating the master plan because that's what they're going to reference. You need to memorialize everything that yours is your intent and create those guidelines and those kind of things through the master plan process. And then push further to have those codified. So whatever is, you know, the guidelines that are must must be part of our code. And that, in my mind, is how you make the change and the recommendation that you're making now that has to happen in twenty years. So that's why all you guys, everything you're doing on the master plan right now is so important because you might not be here in twenty years. But what you contributed to the master plan, that whoever is Cody at that time has to reference and has to prove. As far as those developments. So Brittany, well.
Thank you.
Heck, we were looking at the land south of this on the other side of fifty eight and I'm like, wait a second, I think it's just, that's twenty years away.
When it, when is this gonna start? When do you think you'll break ground?
A lot depends on the economy. I I think your hope is to be moving dirt this time next year. Have lots ready by end of next year. Uh, we wanna get saddleback going first, but. There's some sewer capacities they got they gotta figure out and I think you're working on and. Um, there there's a lot to be done on this site with the development agreement.
You got more of your lateral that will have to be addressed as part of phase one too.
Yeah, we're already talking to North Pooter. They're they've been good to work with. We're gonna bury that ditch, that ditch lateral and all that.
Yeah, when it says bury, they're they're gonna pipe it.
You automatically claim the rights then and.
Well, the other part of that though, with the with the south part of that. Are, do you know what I'm saying? Do you know what's about to come out of my mouth that way you're staring at me? No, so this south, this development on the south side of GW with having sidewalks there will also. Well, I know that that railroad crossing has been a a thing. Doesn't have arms now?
What do you mean? I paid for it. Reason why there's such a tight annexation agreement is I wanted to make sure I didn't have to pay for stuff down the road and the town helped out.
But the crossings there will be, you know, it's a lot better now than it's ever been before. Like it looks fantastic, but you're gonna have that side, that other side.
Streetskeep is gonna go across on the south side too.
There is something I didn't notice about that though. Um, uh, there was a guy in a wheelchair and he couldn't get up the ramp. Because it's more of like a straight like curve where the concrete's at. He had to go around because there's an actual old. Like driveway apron further down the road, but it's grassed.
Yeah, that's not part of the sidewalk.
No, no, but I was just mentioning that as a part of that area.
We we're not, we didn't design the street or that lip to be wheelchair accessible. There's he would, I'm not sure how you end up in the road there, but if the trail connection should have been on the. Or the sidewalk connection should have been at Sage Meadows Drive. It goes through. There's not any other access point between there and.
Yeah, he came over from third, definitely. And I guess he was out in the street the whole time.
Possibly he went around the sidewalk closed barricade to get into. But to that end on the south side. It'll open up once the other side of that connects. Being us up in the railroad for railroad safety required us to close that portion of sidewalk for public access because. There's not a place for it to connect. It was important as part of that railroad project that while we were in the right of way and impacting the railroad and they have to overview or oversight on everything there. To make sure that we don't have to touch it again. So we did construct the sidewalk on both sides. It just doesn't connect anything.
So we're out of the right of way. So we don't have to go back to them.
I do wanna touch on something real quick because of uh Brett. Uh, we just heard about the master plan as we do have the twenty fifteen master plan. We don't have a new one yet and the trail is in that master plan. The port in place has always been a wishlist item and it was for Winnick Park and it was. All the whole time, we don't have that in that per master plan. So I do wanna make that clear that. If we're talking about following what we already have in place, this is what we have in place. We don't have. The port in place, but it can be also something that we discuss. Later, everybody go home and kind of rattle it around in your brain and see what comes out, but that is just something I wanted to point out. So. If we have anything else?
Thanks, John. Can I can I kind of summarize real quick to make sure we're taking the right feedback from the next discussion? And correct me if I if I misinterpreted, but at a high level, what I'm hearing is that the overall layout made makes sense. That the trail alignment kind of north, south, tied into Sage Meadows was a was a positive component. The pocket park location size, proposed amenities makes sense for. Uh, for what the post would recommend in terms of the HOA developing those. The trail width, I think I heard ten foot was 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 good. And I'm hearing that maybe there's some discussion that wants to take place around. Strict adherence to the master plan or does that need to come back a little bit?
I think what it kind of boils down to is is it possible to to do what we want with the soft trails or is is it like? Maybe does it do you be narrowed in certain areas, but we're still getting some.
On one side maybe.
Just maybe more information on what is possible.
Could I, maybe it would be possible as we between, so in terms of development process, we have the preliminary plot, which is where we're at now. Once the preliminary plot is approved, that gives the developer the the. Green light to proceed to final plot and final plot is when they do a much more detailed construction drawing view. Would the post board feel comfortable if during that, you know, the more detailed design we can work with with Darren and their designers? To evaluate those conditions and bring that back for that that component? Does that make sense to you, Darren?
And we'll have a better idea on the port of place too.
Some of that's also gonna be, you know, you're saying you're hoping to be moving dirt this time next year.
It could be three.
Yeah, we don't know that, that we might have our new master plan. We might have different ideas. Town, you know, trustees might have a a different idea what they want. So I mean, we're all kind of still just. Starting off here, so. But I'm excited for the development. I'll be the one calling complaining about dust. I live in uh Mountain View.
Thanks for that clarification. I think we have a a path there on the 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 trail width and design. I think we we heard Darren's gonna take a look at pricing on on Forte Place to see what's possible for the pocket parks. Um, there was a desire for looking at the lighting ballards, low level ballards. Respect the neighbors, consider spacing to make sure that that there's. Visibility, but not overdoing it. Well, and I don't know exactly what that looks like, but I think the intent was clear to evaluate that. And the other highlights that you caught, Brittany, anything I missed?
You guys did like the shortened walks.
And trail alignment and connectivity. Coming from existing.
And in all future phases, we'll come back through a similar process to make sure that there's.
We didn't bring out the lot now, but. Lightly and then earlier that thought of being able to move forward on. The other park as soon as possible. Yeah, that's that's definitely been something that this group has brought up many, many times. So bringing that up in relation to this, I just wanna make sure. Put a pin in that one.
It's gonna work for the town. It's gonna work for me. Um, I mean, it's guys, it's hard when you have churches offering to buy it too and. I'm trying to be loyal to Cody because I wouldn't have done it without Cody. And we're trying to do it with the town, but.
Well, I think if you were asking if this this group has motivation to like say. We need to make that happen. I'm sure you would get that support from here because they've been talking about that for a while too. So. If if anybody was looking for encouragement for Cody to encourage.
I think, you know, it it goes, it's a lot of work and and you know, it's a lot of time and back and forth and conversations and. Um, I mean, it's it's evident how much. You care about the community, Darren, with what you've done with developments and the Boys and Girls Club and and all of that. And I think that that. Doesn't, I want you to know it doesn't go unnoticed. Um, and I think that, thank you for taking the feedback that our group has because. You know, that you're trying to work with multiple different groups and Cody, what you've been doing and Brittany. It's, thank you.
Thank you.
For everything you do for our community.
Guys, I gotta tell you honestly, we wouldn't be this far along if we didn't have Cody because there's, I mean, we were getting frustrated seven years ago. So I mean.
Cody, Cody brings.
Unless Brittany learns what Cody does and then. You guys are so big, you need two of them. It's amazing because honestly, guys, we we never planned on, we planned on just doing one of the part. We never planned on even doing sites. Which once we did sites, it's a game changer. But then we were trying to keep sites on the table. Because when we were asked to slow things down, we started this project in two thousand eighteen. And then put sites under contract in nineteen, I think. And then all of a sudden, everything stalled out with the town. So to keep this thing all together for the last six years is not that easy. So, in fact, we almost walked away and didn't do sites. Which would have been a total change and you know, and it's hard to do something when you only have a hundred and fifty acres by having the three hundred acres and having the commercial and. And putting stuck to his guns on what and that and then hopefully getting UC health. Um, it it could be a game changer for the whole community. Uh, and so we're gonna do whatever we can to make it great. So, and we're gonna mess up.
And I appreciate what what Sarah said and and I don't take this lightly, but I've I've been working in planning for for a long time. And Darren is easily the best developer I've had to work with in terms of. Will you, will you work with us on this? And he always comes back and says, yes, we do. I like the term arm wrestle.
I was planning on like thirteen acres. It's like, alright, set up a meeting. We'll have it under contract and what we had under contract in thirty days.
Yeah, yeah, not less.
It's awesome, guys. Thank you.
We've we've got a great opportunity to work on this project and and a great personal event.
So, appreciate the feedback and we'll bring back some more to you guys.
Thank you, Billy.
Darren, this is really important. So thank.
You've done a lot of the, like, you've been here. Yeah, yeah, I mean, and and it's. That that doesn't go unnoticed, you know, so. Thank you. And I'm sure a lot, it's hard and emotional and, you know, you worked, you were part of the group that put together the two thousand fifteen master plan and so. You know, it's a good thing for us all to be. Reminded that, you know, it took a lot to get to that place too, even if there are things and changes we, you know, or adjustments or conver- hard conversations that come up. That that's, you know, it doesn't go unnoticed and what you've done isn't being pushed aside or, you know.
Oh, yeah, no, this is great. I thank you. And and and, yeah, I. I think it's gonna be a great process for us to all work through. I think it's gonna be uh, yeah, really important. I just, it it's um, it's been a minute since we've had such a secure board. Um, people that are so deeply passionate. About the different areas of 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 what we have going on here with Post and so. It's, I'm just genuinely moved by by how great this board is sitting right now. Um, so, yeah.
You can get us an email with some of the information on events.
Yeah, the event stuff will be good. One thing I do wanna note real quick is we um, we're gonna. Try to apply for a grant through T-Mobile for the memorial. Um, Kelly and I are gonna have a meeting in a couple of weeks about it. So I will give more if I have an idea. Have, yes, so I'll 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 send out some follow up information. Um, it will, we'll have our meeting prior to our next prose meeting. But if there's any discussion that needs to happen surrounding that, the deadline isn't till after. There's like two more prose meetings before the deadline. So we can absolutely get whatever information we need from here, um, letters of support from this board. As well as community partners like we've done in the past for other grants. So, you know, it would be fantastic. Um, there is also a. Uh, Lowe's. Uh, grantor, I guess it's grant that we're gonna pursue as well, but we're gonna try to comply with. Effort into the T-Mobile one to start with because it aligns directly with. Um, community garden or the. It's been so many names. So that trans garden at Wellington Community Park. So I'll give you updates as we go through that process and before we get the application in. The other thing that I wanna consider for this group right now is we wanna do the ribbon cutting for the dock. The day before Kids to Park Day in the fishing derby, maybe the sixteen, Friday afternoon. Um, it's not necessarily gonna be fully open to the public. We wanna keep it to the key stakeholders again, board of trustees. Colorado Parks and Wildlife for providing the grant as well as past pros to um.